One moment.
........................................................................ Thank you.
Done.
Sorry, didn't recognize it.
My phone is talking to me at all these other. Why does it do that on seven o'clock? Um, you wanna, you wanna start with our? Yes. Uh, okay, so Pete, Pete Laramie, he's, he's with us tonight. Um, I'm just gonna be, be as brief as I can.
Thank you.
Cause he, he wants to go, he's, he's no longer an employee. Pete retired this year after thirty-five years.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years, uh, here in Fairhaven. Uh, little bit about Peter, uh, Pete graduated from Fairhaven High School. Uh, spent a couple of years in college, um, and then he went off to the Air Force to serve his country. Uh, coming back, he started working for the town of Fairhaven. Uh, he started with the water, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. Um, so he started working at the water plant.
Town garage.
Town garage. Uh, he spent a stint as the zoning administrator. Um, the admin assistant and admin assistant. Uh, and super, superintendent of the water and sewer plants.
And sewer jobs.
And sewer jobs. Uh, in nineteen ninety-three, took over as the chief operator over at the wastewater plant. And that's where his career took him, and that's where he retired from. Uh, just a few highlights of, of men, um, in two thousand and twelve. Uh, Peter won the Operator Excellence Award. This is a regional award for New England. Um, also in two thousand and twelve, uh, his plant won the, the, an excellence award from Green Mountain Water Environment, uh, Association. And just this year, twenty twenty, uh, Peter again won, uh, an Operator Excellent, Excellence Award from Green Mountain, uh, again, Green Mountain Water Environmental Association. From my standpoint, from, I, I've been here for two and a half years, I could not afford to put it down. Just, honest as the day is long, knowledgeable about his, his experience with the town, and very willing to share that experience. Uh, he makes his job, he, he makes working at the wastewater plant sound exciting. It's more than one time, and I, I can tell you, it's like, that sounds, that sounds wonderful, I would like to try that. Um, so Peter, I would like to thank you for your dedication to the town. Um, I think Bob has, has something he would like to say.
You, uh, Joe mentioned that, and, uh, the Green Mountain Water Environmental Association Wastewater Operator Excellence Award for Outstanding Service in Water Pollution Control in twenty nineteen, presented to Peter Laramie, Fairhaven, WWTF, May twenty twenty. So let's kind of welcome.
We're gonna get one.
Uh, can I get a picture of Peter shaking your hand?
Oh, yeah, no touching.
No touching.
Let's get out of the.
Just hold the award like, uh, there we go.
Now you're touching.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We'll hear about that.
That's how you spread COVID.
You forgot the part about my, my second day on the job kicking up half a dead skull. Beaver coming, Scott, the other half.
But in addition to winning the award, Peter, we would also like to present you some retirement gifts. Um, we'll start with.
Peter's city?
Yeah.
Is that important?
So you can remember, remember Fairhaven, like it's going anywhere.
Yeah, like a bell or.
Peter Huntun, picture downtown.
Alright. He has an actual connection to Fairhaven, I didn't know it, his grandparents. He knows it right now.
Cool.
It's not a box on it.
It's a printable box. I couldn't get the original.
Oh.
I know, I'm sorry. And because you couldn't go biking the tyranny, I think it was.
Yeah.
We did manage to make a small big picture, um, for you in like, up in, uh, Lake Placid for three nights over in the White Bay Lodge.
Wow.
So I don't have a shirt with me, but here's a picture of the lodge, one of the rooms.
Nice.
There you go.
Someday my wife will be able to leave the state again, and then we can go.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Well deserved.
Well deserved, Peter. Enjoy your vacation. Stop by once in a while, I hear you might. I hear you might stop by once in a while.
I might stop by once in a while.
Good.
Give it straight, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you later.
Okay.
I got Jeff's. I got it, did you get Jeff?
I'm gonna see if I can't get this over to you.
Hey. We're trying now, we'll, uh, do the final, the next thing is the, the final, uh, public hearing for the bike and pedestrian grant, but we're trying to get one of the last of our selectmen on, onboard.
Yeah, we haven't checked it for this public stake.
They got the wrong, they got the wrong mic? Hello?
Two other people. I don't, I don't know. Um, okay, let me, I'm gonna run to my office and send this to Jeff's email. There you go. Let me see what I. Eric, are you still there?
I am.
Can you give an overview real quick while, uh, while we try to fix the technical difficulties?
Sure, yeah, no problem. Is that just in terms of passing screen sharing off to me?
Oh, I was just letting you talk a little bit.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so, um, we're here tonight to talk about the supplemental scoping alternatives presentation. Um, we came down in August of last year and presented three alternatives that were supposed to be a, um, extension of a previous study performed by Duboy and King. Uh, that night, the three, uh, alternatives that we brought were, I would say, equally unpopular. So in the time since then, we've developed a fourth alternative, um, which we'll show tonight. Actually, what we'll do is we'll go through, we'll kind of make it an official alternatives presentation meeting. We'll go through the purpose of the project and the background, um, the, um, the other alternatives that we looked at in August. And then we can kind of just fly through those, and then we'll focus on the new alternative.
Sounds good. Uh, give us a second, see if we can get another selectman on.
Yep, no problem.
Jeff, can you hear me now? Jeff?
Can anybody hear me?
There we go.
Hey, Jeff, how you doing?
Sorry about that, guys, glitch.
We're back in business. Okay, so we can, we can proceed, of course. Eric, Eric, I'm gonna share the screen.
Okay, sounds good.
Put it up there. Put it up there.
Hey, Joe, it's, uh, saying that the screen sharing is disabled for me.
Looks good from here.
If you.
I'm sorry, Eric, what?
Uh, I'm not able to share my screen, though.
Okay, Eric, all and more. Any idea how I do that, Eric?
You could actually just make me host, and then I can pass it back to you when I'm done.
There you go. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, there you go, when you're the host.
Okay, do you see the, uh, the title, the title sheet?
Nope.
Let me, let me know when you see it. Oh, hang on.
Eric, there we go, something's happening.
Okay, cool. Well, I already ran through the intro, so, um, we can sort of just dive into it. Um, so the agenda for tonight is we'll, like I said, we're, we're gonna cover this first few bullet points pretty quickly. We'll go over the project development process, we'll look at the project area. We'll look a little bit about the existing conditions, uh, research that came out of the previous scoping study. Um, and then we'd really like to hear some feedback on, um, any of the three alternatives that we already showed or the new ones that we're gonna show tonight. And at the end, we'll talk about what comes next. Uh, so the typical project development process is as follows. You start in the yellow highlighted square project definition, that's another word for the scoping phase. It's where an issue or a problem is identified, um, you study the problem, you come up with alternatives, and hopefully at the end of the pro- process, you have an alternative that's embraced by the community. Um, once that happens and once it's endorsed, uh, the project becomes eligible for funding through grants or other means. Uh, it can then be designed and ultimately built. So the first three tasks are done, the data was gathered, we, uh, the local concerns meeting was actually part of the previous scoping study, but we did an alternatives presentation meeting back in August, as I mentioned. Um, so we're still at task four, we're gonna kind of have a do-over of that tonight. Um, after that, we can wrap up the scoping study and, uh, hope to seek endorsement of one of the alternatives. Uh, so the study area is outlined in the red dashed line, it's essentially downtown, uh, including the parking lot. Uh, some of the existing conditions are, of course, the, the large green, um, there's an EV charging station, some monuments, some memorials, um, some really nice looking historic buildings, uh, pretty good network of, uh, concrete sidewalks and some street trees as well. In terms of the roadway, though, uh, they are very wide roads, which, uh, have no dedicated bicycle facilities. Um, there are very large areas of pavement, um, long exposed crosswalks, and then that parking right, which you can see in the picture on the left. So during the previous study, these were the priorities that came out from the public input, and it was pedestrian, cycle safety, and safety for, uh, all ages and abilities. And then there was some streetscape beautification aspect of that input as well. So I will fly through these, we, we did them before, um, but I'll just kind of give the quick overview on the first three. Um, so this one proposed to take the, uh, parking that's angled right now, or pole-in parking, and turn it into parallel. And what that does is allows a bike lane to be safely put next to the, um, next to the parking, between the parking and the roadway, um, because it doesn't have cars backing up across the bike lane. Uh, same thing on the other side, and then it was just a matter of a little bit of access management, uh, which was splitting, uh, the long crosswalk here, uh, little bit of an island here, and then just connecting everything together with some new sidewalk and curb extensions. Um, alternative two was, uh, flipped, so the bike lane is on the opposite side of the parking now. And that is done by moving the parking out a little bit on the east side of the road and putting in a shared use path along the west side of the road that runs all the way along here. Um, because the, the bike lanes and bike paths are, you know, sort of behind the parking or, or in front of the parking, you don't have that concern of cars backing across the lane. So that would be considered a safe, um, setup for cyclists on the road. And again, it was another connection of all the sidewalks and curb extensions. Uh, the alternative three was a little bit unorthodox, it was, uh, proposed to have back-in parking here. Um, and that allows the bike lane to be safely between the parking and the roadway, uh, because cars are facing forwards, they can see cyclists coming. And all the other, um, aspects of the other two are the same with the access management and the pedestrian crossings at the four locations. So, um, after the feedback from the first presentation, we decided to go with another alternative that focused on just pedestrians and kind of left the on-road cycling out of the equation. Um, so you can see it's a, it's a somewhat similar setup in where the crosswalks are and the access management, which is actually being done under a different project. Um, but this sort of depicts what it's gonna look like. Um, the sidewalk ends up getting redone all the way through to the end of the project, and then another crossing here. We don't do anything on road at all, um, there is a slight modification to parking, um, but, but not much. It's, it's a loss of only a few spaces.
Um. Excuse me, when you said, uh, the other crossing here, is that by the bank, that's when you're talking about?
Down by the.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, he's down by the.
Yeah, the cross.
Oh, that's.
Cross. Yeah.
That way down the hill?
Yep, down by where River Street comes out.
There, he's pointing down there by Shantin's place, ain't he?
Yeah.
Right, did you open it close up? Okay, I was looking the wrong way. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Um, Joe, when we get to the questions part, um, I'm hav- I'm having a hard time hearing. Uh, maybe you could just relay the questions to me if I'm not able to hear them, if that sounds okay to you.
Sure, we know we'll pass off the speakers, so folks can hear.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. We'll pass off the speakers, so that way everybody can hear.
That sounds perfect, that sounds perfect. Uh, okay, so that pretty much sums up the new alternative, and what I can do is, um, pop open a bigger view and we can, um, sort of walk through it, or this is a good time to jump in with any questions or comments. Um, and we can kind of zoom into any part of it that, that people want to see.
I have a question. Not a time.
Yep.
Can I take off my mask so you can hear me?
Paper's over the speaker.
Oh, let's see, oh, wait here. Hi.
Hi.
This is Carol Egan, I'm one of the select board members, but I also, in that picture, my husband owns the business that's about halfway, the long, thin building, where, next to the red walkway.
Here?
Uh, no, down on the other side of the road.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right there, that. So my, my only concern is, I think that'd be awesome, but as someone that goes in and out of there a lot, there's typically cars parked all in front of Durfee Store, and it's really difficult to see who's coming. So I just worry about, you know, you gotta get past pedestrians first and then stick your nose out into the road if that poses a danger to. Have, have you guys tried to pull out of there? I mean, it's, it's a tough place to pull out of.
Yeah, uh, I, I understand the concern, and that makes sense. The good thing is, you know, pedestrians move pretty slowly, so it would be pretty easy to sort of pull to this point and at least see if there's any, um, pedestrians, and then, you know, sort of ease into the roadway, um, to get a look at if there's any traffic. This isn't a bike path in this case, which is not to say that bikes couldn't ride on it, but they're typically not going to. So it's, it's generally gonna be for pedestrians.
Well, what's, I, I'm new to this, so I, what's gonna make it different than what's there now? Does pedestrians walk, is it a, a new sidewalk that they'll be on that's, that's marked off, or how will that look?
Yeah, it's just gonna be, yeah, it's just gonna be a new concrete sidewalk with a new curb to further delineate it. Now, if I'm following you, what could potentially be done is to bring, um, bring the sidewalk out a little further in this area, and that would create a more square driveway entrance. If that makes sense.
It might, it might be safer, and a lot of people try to cross, well, I know they shouldn't, but it's a long ways between where that, now the orange line is, over across the street.
Gotcha, so you're getting people crossing sort of right across here?
Well, yeah, they, they go typically from the wooden soldier, they go kitty corner over that way. So that's just a, I know they shouldn't be, but that's another danger, I think.
Sure.
That's all I.
Yeah, so we could certainly, we could certainly move this driveway out a little bit, and I think that would get vehicles a little bit more past that parking to see better, especially in this direction.
I have a question, Eric, the, the two greens that I see, one are free parking, and the other ones are from the stores. This part of the project too, have greens?
The, the grass section looks like.
Yeah. So we're moving handicap parking back farther for the people? To get across the road?
We talking about here?
No, like right where our free parking is, where we got all the cars lined up.
The two green spots.
Two green spots.
Looks like grass, right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's gonna be, that's all gonna be dirt and grass, I think, that's the plan. So now we're moving handicap parking farther back into the parking lot. That's the only handicap parking we have on that block.
Yeah.
The front of the wooden soldier, the rest of the block has none. And there's two, uh, spots right where that green is for handicap, and that's the only three places to go.
There's nine apartments in that building across that parkview where typically, many of them are.
That was my, my thought was now we're moving handicap back farther away from, I mean, I don't know how big that green is, I'm just throwing it out, but I just, that's what it looks like to me, we're pushing everything back further.
Yep. Yeah, I hear you, um, that, this is just like a, a sketch, it doesn't necessarily, um, show exactly how it would be laid out. It doesn't necessarily need to come down this far. It would just be enough to channelize, uh, you know, a one-way in and a one-way out. Um, it's, so this, yeah, we wouldn't need to move any parking spots. And, um, Joe, maybe you have a little bit better concept of what this is actually going to be?
Yeah, so we did get a Vtrans grant to, to refurbish that parking lot, and at the end, where that green is, there is gonna be some kind of pedestrian, uh, eye. It's not necessarily gonna look like that, but there will be something there. Um, and just, Eric didn't mention it, but, so this, what he's showing is not anything set in stone. This is just options, he's, he's saying, he studied the situation. Uh, and these are potential options that the board could take, you know, in, in terms of getting funding and then implementing. Um, but these are by no means things happening tomorrow, or maybe ever.
No, that was just my only concern, that, where the electric cars bug in, I see you guys are adding green here too. I don't know if you guys are standing them out, or how that was gonna work out. Those are only my two thoughts, I'm so good.
There's any better there too as well?
There's a couple, but the residents of Parkview are sup- were supposed to park where that handicap parking is, where the green is. That's their designated spot.
As far as the purpose of it, there's no handicap drop there.
I think there's a couple up by the entrance into the park that are just marked. For like where, you know, where you park for the band, like closest spot to get in.
I think so, that was my answer.
We should review what we have for the. Make sure we're not losing any, or pushing it back. I'd be concerned about the crosswalk, our way down the hill, cause cars use that hill to slow down coming uphill, and they seem to be a little slower because of the corner heading south. But they're, they're already slowed down some, there's a study done, the speed was, I think it averaged twenty-seven or something like that. But cars pick up speed going down that hill, and they're still going fast coming off, prospecting down the hill heading north. Seems like a, not a great stop for a crosswalk.
I think that's why they're ready for crosswalk on, uh, south, I don't either.
What I'm looking at is, I keep hearing and seeing a lot of people cross in this area, and what this, what bothers me a little bit is this doesn't address making it safer for those people that are gonna be crossing Durfee, the wooden soldier, wooden soldier, Durfee. If we're gonna do something, and we're looking at, you know, the goal of the thing with safety and everything else, even though I understand with the hill, does it even make, can, can large trucks stop and start if someone's in the, on that steepest part of the hill, coming, going north? I understand the concern, but, uh, you know, I mean, the only thing I see that doesn't address is we're gonna have just as much foot traffic, and we haven't done a thing to designate a crosswalk or anything to make it safer for them. My only concern.
So are you still keeping the one in front of the on-go map, so?
Yep.
That one seems good, cause there's good visualization both ways, but yeah.
The other, the other people that.
No, they go.
Duboy, Duboy and King people call it the longest, the longest crosswalk in the world.
So. I'm sorry, to, to Glenn's point about right there in front of the wooden soldier, um, I get, I've heard a lot that, no, it's too dangerous to cross there, and trucks can't go, and they can't stop. It doesn't matter, cause people cross there.
They run, they just look and run, yeah.
Trucks are gonna stop, and trucks are gonna go, it doesn't matter if it's designated or not. It, from, I, so I had some elderly friends come, and crossing that road, people were flying, and my friends who are, and they're almost eighty, they kind of had to get up and go, and it's not, it's not safe for, for anybody right there.
They also now have to park in the free parking, and schlep the laundry across the street.
Yeah.
Because there's no parking in front of the lawn.
Yep.
And I know, I keep hearing all the reasons why we couldn't get this one out, get the parking places back, and put it, put a crosswalk in there, people were saying, no. At the time, when they did it supposedly, I was told something that they needed one there for some reason. I don't, I don't, I wasn't here, my decision would make it.
It was, uh, losing that parking, or, excuse me, losing that crosswalk created upheaval, that's for sure.
I know it was, uh, it was a big issue with the owner at the time of Subway that was sitting in there, and, and there was a lot of infighting over whether they had one or not, we took parking away. I just don't know, I just don't know enough about the Eric's report, that Eric. I, also, if I'm looking for the cost.
Yeah.
If, if I was looking at what I'm gonna spend, and I'm, I'm still not sure, and even more so after hearing Kelly, your concerns about this session right here, that we don't, that people just came over here and we left down that side versus even getting, even getting involved in putting that stuff in.
But wherever.
But then they have to cross again to get to the post office, cause people that go down the hill there are, are looking to go to the post office.
Right.
But they can go down in front of the, they're giving out, I'm sorry.
Right, come down, fifth block down there, down.
Is there any way to have a, a, you know, a safe crossing, uh, beeper or whatever, you have to have a stoplight there in order to do it? Can you put up, safe to cross, visual noise-making things on crosswalks that don't have a stoplight?
Yes. Yeah, there could be, um, well, like potentially rapid flashing beacons could be an option. Those are those little, uh, rectangular lights that, uh, are, are dark until somebody presses a button, they start alternating, um, they flash yellow. Um, you could do curb extensions like this, that can make a safe crossing, depending on, um, you know, these are great for mid, mid-block crossings. Um, this area here, if I'm reading this correct, this is sort of right where the crossing is, is wanted? Or it's like kind of diagonal going across here?
Yes, that's the area where it's at. Straight across it.
Straight across.
Okay.
Straight across the wooden soldier. The, the problem is.
Okay.
It's right at the crest of the hill.
Yeah.
And you're gonna, you're gonna run into trouble, particularly in the winter time, with, with, uh, vehicles. And you're gonna, you're gonna run in trouble, particularly in the winter time, with, with, uh, vehicles stopping, not being able to go, not standing down in the sloppy weather, and then they won't be able to get traction to go again, because they have to stop somewhere in the crosswalk. There you go, yeah. So that, that's.
Yeah, um, that's a tough spot for the reasons that are being listed, uh, that, that hill is gonna be an issue in the winter. Um, now theoretically, there's less people walking around during a snowstorm in the winter, but that's, that's certainly a valid concern. It would also impact some of the parking in here, just because, um, you've gotta have like twenty feet clear from the cr, edge of the crosswalk to the first parking place. Uh, parking space, and that might eliminate a few spaces, um, but otherwise, I mean, it's, I, I don't, it's doable, there's no reason it can't be there, it just, um, we'd wanna take a look at the overall picture of where these crosswalks are, maybe space them appropriately, if you're saying that one's needed here, um, how about this one, does this one get used quite a bit as it is today?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, V-Trans will tell you that these things have to be at least two hundred feet apart, which in an area like this, where you've got a lot going on on both sides, two hundred feet is a long ways to expect somebody to walk to the next crosswalk. Um, but we could potentially, yeah, and I think these ones are a little tighter than two hundred anyway. Um, two hundred is probably likely about, like, from the one on this end to the middle. So we could probably fit three, and if we were doing it the official V-Trans way. Um, yeah, it's, it's a tough spot, because it seems like you've got desire lines, you know, kinda competing desire lines near each other. Now, the only thought maybe is if, you know, you make this one more attractive by, by bumping it out, and it becomes a shorter crossing, maybe you get some of that pedestrian traffic to wanna walk up here and do that shorter crossing.
I think that's a better idea.
And, and even if.
Everybody's already used to lots of parking lot, or the parking spaces there. Whether they like it or not, that's another story, but they're used to it. Um, if we were to get at the crest of the hill by the wooden soldier, it's gonna start another whole battle of.
Not, not looking for a battle, but is there, and I don't know, but signage about, uh, about the no jaywalking or whatever, to change the behavior, how do you change the behavior? Or do you start another World War III by saying, you can cross?
I don't know.
I, I guess that is.
Ever, just people not cross.
Probably. It's the place where I drive to town that I, where I'm gonna get somebody.
Yeah, well, it.
Because they're, they're usually stepping on it, because there is no crosswalk, they're, they're guarded when you're walking through there.
Well, I think it, I think it makes the most sense is to try to figure out how to get people to recognize that to the, to the locker, or, um, crosswalk. I, I don't wanna do that. But I think bumping it out and doing something that makes that a, you know, somehow, you're kind of on the run, but by the time you see what, what's coming, and that's been the concern with everybody, every engineer that's come out here. Um, but then when you start talking about traffic, traffic calming things, or another little island, or the, the DBW gets into the
Can't blow the snow.
Plowing, and things like that, so it's a difficult, it's a difficult part of the world to, to make better, that's for sure. And I'm not sure how to do that. I guess that's why we cut.
Um. So I have a question, what if we, like, split the difference and remove this one, and then put it, you know, maybe sorta right in the middle?
If you're all close to the top of the hill, and cars coming up over the hill, we see somebody in the road and tell they're right on top of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really, really tough, I mean,
people are, people are crossing there anyway, it's like, well, the cars are coming, and there might be somebody there, there's already somebody there, really, so it's, is there a way, um, Eric, is there a way to make that crossing the illegal crossing safe? Not designated a crossing, but somehow make it known that there will be.
Right here?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can put the pedestrian warning sign, um, it's essentially just like that green sign with a person walking, and normally you see them at crosswalks. In fact, I think you have one back here, so it would be like this sign?
Yeah.
Right here without the arrow, and that just kinda lets motorists know that pedestrians are crossing in the area. But, you know, a lot of this stuff gets lost in the noise of a downtown, and it's, you know, a sign like that's not really gonna stand out.
No.
People, people are sidelined very quickly, yeah. I, I don't know, I, I think it's incumbent to us to figure out a way to make it know that we're gonna have people crossing there, to do signage or do, do whatever, say, but I don't think we want, what is, I don't want to lost one there.
It was just that, from, we, I, I look at where we have the issue, cars backing up from Durfys, we're out of, out of, uh, the, and deep house.
Yeah.
And the other ones, they're coming from the south, coming up, and they're right there, top of the hill, on them right there, you're gonna have the little fender benders, whatever, that's.
Well, the people that are turning left out of the auto supply are basically gunning it and hoping for the best.
Yeah.
I mean, it'd be nice if you could only go right out of there, and that would take a lot of the danger for crossing as well. But, I mean, there's been lots of fender benders there, and even more, you know, post halls.
You'd right out of the parking lot?
Yeah, to only be able to go right.
One of them, make them that one way.
Turn right, go turn around.
Make them what?
Make it that one way, and all the dogs, you can't ride out.
Well, they are not gonna, they shouldn't go from the auto supply straight across to Liberty, you know, do like a kitty corner to Liberty Street, that'll be
I know, but you eliminate one thing that's before.
They should just go down the hill and go around the block.
I don't think that's a terrible idea at all, really. The one way that, I mean, why not, right, you can turn out of that driveway?
It's the ones that do the big, uh, views from Durfys too, you know, that put it in reverse and swing around. But I don't know how you stop that. But if you, if you went right out of the auto supply, all those people coming out are gonna miss the ones that are trying to run across.
Also, just thinking, you know, at, at our last economic development committee meeting, they were talking about sidewalks, none of the shops, the wooden soldier, everything, they're getting pretty bad.
That's what I.
And we need it, and we need to fix them anyway. I'd, I'd love to be able to take the walk in that, and, and fixing that sidewalk, maybe combine it, only, only spend the money one time, you know, and I thought it might.
Yeah, the, the, um, sidewalks from Durfys down the hill are all broken and uneven, and they're a mess, all, all in there.
On the highway, right?
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the proposed improvement would be to replace those.
Oh, good.
Why don't we just make everything parallel parking? And just get rid of.
And like down along here, there'd be a curb and a sidewalk.
One, you're not expecting on traffic, and two, if you do parallel parking, now it makes it safer, and you're making a wider view for people coming up on the hill.
Well, yeah, if you did parallel parking, you'd probably be here, but, um, Nate from the DBW was talking about parallel parking in front of Durfys. My first question, how many, how many of the parking spaces do you have of those?
That's gonna put Mary over the top.
Oh, yeah.
That, that would put Mary over the top.
Yeah, yeah, it would.
It definitely would.
Yeah.
So you're doing it in front of the wooden soldier.
Yeah, and that would be taking away quite a bit of business.
Wait, you're doing that in front of the wooden soldier, right?
No, not yet.
No.
Oh, when he zoomed in on it, we'll make first parking spots here, it's my bad.
And that parking next to Durfys, that looks dirt, you know, but there's the auto supply in that right there, that does not belong to Durfys, so if you make that parallel parking, if that building was sold or whatever, they can't park there, so you're really taking away parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, this alternative, um, resulted in the greatest loss of parking spaces, I think it was about, uh, twenty-eight, no, thirty, thirty-three.
No.
Oh, that's ridiculous. Which one is that?
That's our alternative one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that, that, that is something I've liked.
No. No.
No. I mean, I think number four at least gives us five options.
Right.
Um, the other three were kinda dead on arrival, mostly because of the, the parking problems, and I hate to say it, but very, but like in general, wasn't. Are there any other questions, I mean, we, we can beat this up all the while, but.
I mean, I like, out of all of my like four,
Me as well.
It's getting close, I like four better, and, and, and we can put some thought into whatever traffic calming for Liberty, got that, that one, when it passed.
Yeah, I, I think that turns us, that somehow, somehow get people redirected to that, to that, uh, longer map crossing.
If you make that one, I, I can, I can, it looks.
Mary go around.
Yeah.
The end of it.
We, we, actually, let me clarify, that one.
Something to, yeah.
You know, oh, the traditionalists, and now we're not having.
So Eric? I was gonna, Eric, I was gonna ask you, what do you need from us tonight to, uh, to move forward?
Well, let, we can go through to the next slide, and we can just take a quick look at the, um, evaluation matrix. Um, so we already talked about these first three at the last meeting, um, you can see the cost difference, uh, alternative four is substantially less expensive, and the main reason for that is that we don't need to redo the pavement on the roadway. Um, the thought was that with these other alternatives, we tag it in with a resurfacing project, so that all the pavement markings could be redone. But with alternative four, we're not really changing, um, much on the roadway, um, so that's why there's that lower cost. Um, it does meet most of the purpose and need, but it does not meet, um, it doesn't do anything to improve bike safety. Um, whoops, sorry, I mentioned the, uh, parking, so existing conditions are there's a hundred and twenty-five spaces, so five are lost. Um, and that's just because of what I mentioned of there needing to be a minimum space between a crosswalk and parking, that's the only reason any got, um, eliminated, and that's, and, and it was kept to as minimum a number as possible based on the feedbacks from the last meeting. Um, and then in terms of, go, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, where do you lose, where are we gaining, uh, uh, crosswalk, if we don't do that one again?
If we get rid of, uh, this cross, which crosswalk?
The one that was on the hill, was there one down below?
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we wouldn't.
That one was. Yeah, there's no parking at that one, it's, it's really, it's, it's in here where we lose the spaces.
Oh, okay.
And a little bit in here.
Okay, that's not as critical. That, that one doesn't matter. It's part, part, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, Joe, to answer your question, um, if the select board is prepared to, to endorse an alternative tonight, we could do that, or else we could, um, you know, make a few changes, and this, this one alternative could get, you know, shown again at a later date. Um, otherwise, we can wrap up the report, um, and, and if an alternative is endorsed, um, you know, it really needs to, something needs to be endorsed to have any chance of getting grant funding for this.
My, my thought is, if you've been, I hate to keep picking this thing down the road, but I'd like to see some sort of effort put in, um, enhancing people's, uh, I don't know, for, for them to be able to go to that center, center crosswalk, the laundromat crosswalk, collect better care. And I don't know how you redirect people from the, you know, from the wooden soldier and the, and the beach place, and that kind of, those, those particular businesses come down, and that, but I, that's, I'd like to see, we could, we could make that more enticing, and, as opposed to crossing the top of the hill, that would be nice, be nice. Proper that to the people in town.
Um.
I, I don't, that's.
Yeah, I don't.
My board, I don't know.
Sorry, go ahead.
I don't know if there is such a, such a model.
Yeah, I was gonna say, from a design standpoint, I don't know that there's much we can do to discourage that, I mean, I'd hate to suggest having it be an enforcement thing, but, uh, you know, that can certainly change people's behaviors, but I really do think that having, you know, a really welcoming crosswalk, um, versus, you know, having to sprint across three lanes of traffic, or two lanes of traffic, um, might, you know, might lure some people over to this crosswalk, because it's a considerably shorter, I think we've taken like thirty or forty feet off of this crosswalk. Um, so it makes it a much safer, um, you know, much more inviting crosswalk, and I think it will, it's likely to have, um, some of that impact of drawing, you know, the illegal crossings to a legal crosswalk. And then the only other thing I can think of is if, if, you know, I can look at the stopping site distance, if we did kinda split the difference and, and move it to like, say, here. Um, i- if there's the site distance we need for, for the speed limit, then, you know, there's nothing to say we couldn't, we couldn't put one here.
Yeah, I, I don't think that does anything except just start a battle again.
Wooden soldier and the Italian restaurant. Everyone with boots parking.
I, I think we should cross, you know, the sidewalks we've got, I don't think it, it's, uh, valuable to, to move it down a little bit. It's just another, it's another valve that we don't need to do to get. Again, maybe, maybe we're okay with the fact that you're, you're shortening up that sidewalk valve a lot, that's true. What's the rest of the board think, I'm a bottom of luck?
I, I like alternative four, and the only other thing, people who wanna, it's all parking, get it, and it's not part of this, it might be, the sidewalk between these two roads, if there was a sidewalk here where people were parking, blocking here, they wouldn't go down, they, they'd have a tendency to shop here, they might have a tendency to use it a little more, it's just when we go and do the other ones. I, I don't wanna have people parking that here, bringing their, their, their Dodge cars, even though it's one way, so there, there's gonna need to be a walkway.
There is, the, the other study, that is, that's part of it.
Yeah.
There's a walkway right down the middle with, um, trees, right?
So, so if we have that, that one also, shortening that up and having a walkway here, it might have a tendency to bring people into that one.
Yeah.
Where's, where's everybody on the, uh, new island in the corner? What's everybody think of that?
I don't have a problem.
Well, what's it for? Just to look nice, because it's green space?
It's to, sorry, it's to, um, limit a single-point entry and a single-point exit, rather than it just being sort of a free-for-all.
Yeah.
I like that.
It just limits, yeah.
Maybe that gets pushed over a little closer to the, to the, uh, to the sidewalk.
Where they pile all the snow, pretty much.
Yeah, well, that's something that, that didn't happen as much last year, but didn't seem to do that as much, sorry, question for us, Ken, yeah, that's what we usually try.
I, I liked it, the, uh, biggest complaint we heard last time was that's where trucks unload for places like Subway and the laundromat. Um, and with the brewery going in the corner, I just wanted to make sure we thought about it.
Good point, Chuck.
I don't, yeah, I, I mean, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't think it's that much of an option. But I.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't, I.
I like it in general.
I like number four.
Yeah, I like number four. I can't, for some reason I can't get wildly enthusiastic about it. But I, partly, partly because I feel like people would have a lot of feelings and opinions about it. And I'd like to know what those are. Um, yeah, I know. I mean, that's.
Well, maybe what we do is, is we really, because we are a fashion, another, another public hearing just to give people an opportunity. Sometime in September before we start budgeting.
Yeah, I, I just.
Make comfy decisions, put them around town.
Okay, yeah.
That would be hard to do though without having a discussion, I think.
Yeah.
You know, have someone present it.
It's all the same.
I mean, right, because there's some good things, like the fact that you're only moving five parking spaces. And probably three of those are here. You could lose two parking spaces and that was a big concern. And, and that's all with this one right here? Overall, I think.
Well, we're, we're still at a, we're still at a point, if we endorse, we endorse four. Then we give ourselves work with, we're not at a point where it was, we were yay or nay. We don't have to do anything, but at least we're going to be forward with, with, with something. It would be nice to get that sidewalk fixed up. Between derbies and, and, and the auto supply, I'm sure. But it's kind of.
There's steps that are half crumbled.
Yeah.
Those thrown down.
Well, that would be just, uh, it wouldn't be steps, it would just be an impound, I'm sure. Am I correct in that, that you wouldn't leave steps in the, in that sidewalk, right? Eric?
Was that, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that whole question.
Uh, the sidewalk that goes from Derby dump past the auto supply would, would be an impound, would be, uh, it wouldn't be steps.
There's like three steps now that are all crumbled and broken.
Or some ADA with trauma steps.
Back, go up just a little closer to, yeah, right there.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, those could just be sort of graded out.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. You know, you could just chase it back up a little bit and you could, yeah, you could get rid of those steps. Cause it would have to be ADA compliant in order to take federal money to do this and that, that wouldn't be acceptable the way it is right now.
This is sidewalk, sidewalk, yeah. Well, and right there now, we, we gotta actually go further down, down Marble Street, right?
But, but the whole point is, is to get, um, I would be eligible for grants. If we go back to the original picture that you had there, Eric. So, so the proposal, option, option for fitment.
What do you want?
I want the, uh, if we can go back to the original, uh.
Overview of the town.
Overview of the, of the, of the street.
Of alternative four.
Yep. Because again, we're turning this, it's, it's, it's a pedestrian walking path and I'd like option, I like option four, but I'd love option five. Except you come across and I ditch this down to here and this becomes our pedestrian travel path and we go get our monies. It's three hundred thousand for that. I look, it's about the same distance going down, so say six hundred thousand. And we, we've taken care of our, our foot traffic and downtown. As soon as we do this, more and more pressure is gonna come on to, to make, make it better for walking there. So why not just go do it once? That's definitely.
The only sidewalk we're doing is just right here. We're not going down the bridge or something, are we?
Not, I think it's just. It's close. Looks like it goes from here.
How far does, does that sidewalk go?
It starts back again, right toward the end of the right of that picture. There's a sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah.
All of them.
Yeah, so this connects, this connects that.
We're gonna be doing like new stuff here, probably with this build up.
But then there's no sidewalk. If you, you had, you have it going down past where the existing sidewalk is. Past the auto supply, but in between the end of the auto supply and halfway down to, um, what is that, Adam Street? No, Marble Street. It's just a broken mess.
Right.
And that has to be redone. Keep going, yeah. Yeah, there and then a little bit more, yeah.
So it just ties to the sidewalk.
Like by the telephone pole and up, it's all broken.
But that's part of the. I know where it ends, but that, that property ends, right?
It didn't.
It didn't look that way.
Would you like, well, we hear all right. Why do you?
I thought we agreed that we all like option four and that they would come back with something to make it a little more enticing from the laundromat across the street. And we would put out another bid to have, not another bid, but another request to have, um, town input from folks. Cause I, I do think this is something that people will be, have a lot of opinions about.
Is that all right with everybody? Do you need a, do you, do you need a vote to endorse that or is this a board okay for you? Or do you want to vote?
What? Is that a question for me?
I'm sure Eric, it was, yes. Do you need a?
Okay. Yeah, so if, if you're prepared to endorse op- alternative four basically as it is right now, then, then yeah, that would be something to vote on. And that can be included in the scoping report. If we're not there yet, um, then it would be a matter of, you know, tweaking the alternative and bringing it back. Or if we could, if we could agree that, you know, to endorse, um, alternative four with a specific change that I could make, that would be fine too. But for this to pass muster from a Vtrans standpoint, they're gonna want to see, um, the, you know, community support and then the municipality, um, endorsement, like an official endorsement. And then that really puts it in a good position to get grant funding. However, on that note, I should mention that because of COVID, Vtrans is currently suspended their Bike Ped Grant Program. And we haven't heard when it's gonna be back up and running. Hopefully it's just a one-year thing. That grant period had already passed for 2020 anyway. Um, and there is still a transportation alternatives grant that can cover these type of projects. Um, but that's just, that's something that's, that's sort of hanging out there right now for these type of projects.
So to answer your question, I'm not ready to say yes, go ahead with this. It doesn't include the other one. All, all I'm gonna do is upset half the people downtown about fifty point, their side.
I don't get what you're talking about.
I, I'm saying that if we're gonna go out and we're gonna prove this right here, that just means that that says, okay, let's go get that, my mom. Go, let's go get that money and, and try to do just this. I don't want to do just this. If I'm gonna do this, I want to do it right. I want the whole thing coming across here. With that new section, I want the whole thing done.
Well, there, there's nothing said that we couldn't, we couldn't, uh, at the same time we're going to the, the Derby side. That we couldn't budget ourselves to do, to do the sidewalk as part of our regular, our regular, um, baby stuff.
We, we could, but why not get as much grant money as we can to get it done? I, I guess that, I don't want to.
I, I'll give you that.
I, I, I don't want to go spend your money just to do like, fuck it up.
Eric, can you add replacing the sidewalk on the business side of that street too?
Sure.
In front of the businesses? That, that seems that, that what we're getting at, we'd like to see both sides paid.
I got three businesses there, a bunch of businesses.
What, what we're, uh, what we're, what I'm hearing, Eric, is that we need a, we need a, a little more tweaking. And come back with a, with a revised, but, uh, revised proposal for alternative four.
Okay, if I'm hearing this correctly, this would be all of the sidewalk on this side of the road, like through the project limits?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Both sides of the sidewalk.
I mean, because I've heard from some of the owners, their, their biggest complaint is that side.
That side was awful. Let's do that and then let's, what kind of timeframe do you need for that?
I'm sorry?
What kind of timeframe do you need for that?
Not, not long.
My, my.
Like, like weeks, couple weeks tops.
We need to get a public hearing that is a little more well attended than this one. And, uh, we need to do it before we start our, our budget season and notch forward. So that we have an idea of what we're, you know, what, what's, what we're gonna ask for. And we can actually put the time in, but because the bus budget start, we're, we're pretty well focused on that.
Can, can we plan to have them come back in two meetings, four weeks?
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Yep, that's not a problem on our end. We can definitely be ready for that.
Let's do that. Let's leave it at that and, um, let's, and that gives us time to go September or go December meeting. Get the doubt people's, at least the angle they want to talk about. Uh, and, uh, then we can go from there. But I think, I think four is certainly much more palatable than if you talked about four.
Okay, good to hear. And I guess the only other thing I would add is if any ideas kind of come up between now and then, uh, maybe just, uh, relay them to Joe. Um, or else I've actually got my contact information here. Um, you can definitely reach out directly to myself. We can, you know, discuss, uh, the, the sort of illegal crossing a little bit more if we need to and, and I'm fine with that. But otherwise I'll plan to be ready, um, in four weeks to, to show the revisions that we discussed tonight.
We all right with that?
Yeah.
All right, then we will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
You bet. Thank you for having me. And I'm just gonna see if I can make Joe the host again. Here we go. All right, thanks. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Bye.
Get that out of your face. All right, let's start our meeting. Okay, and then this is the agenda. Oh.
One moment.
I, I have two. They're, they're pretty, well, one of them's big. Um, we have a request for transfer station credit account that, that came in today. If we could put that in, um, new business. And then we received our numbers for the tax rate this afternoon. Um, we could talk about that. So we don't have to have a special meeting.
So that will be, please just file numbers. Um, the one is interim, the one is the interim. Little yellow highlighted.
I have a motion for those two combined. Sure, I'll make a motion that we add, uh, under new business, transfer station credit account and the tax rate discussion.
Definitely.
All those are there?
Aye.
Jay.
Sorry. Okay, uh, approval of the minutes of June thirty.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June thirty as written.
For a second?
Second.
Any additions, please, or questions? All those are there?
Aye.
All of them, coach? Thank you.
Uh, residents of Burn Street are not coming in. Uh, five minutes for public discussion.
Um, I don't know, if you'd rather I come back, cause I know the time's short here. Um, I would, I'm coming from the rescue squad. I want to give you an update on what's going on.
Please do.
Those of you who don't know me, my name's Sean Kelvin. Uh, so I thought I'd just give you a quick history of what happened over the past few months during the rescue. I, uh, I got on the board of directors, you appointed me to the board of directors for the ambulance, uh, last fall. I was on there for a few months and then the pandemic hit and then two days after, there was an emergency, the EMS team quit and no donors. So the board of directors of the ambulance asked me to fill that hole for the end of the pandemic. So I, I stepped in and I got a different view than I got from the seat on the, on the board. So when you're in the board, it's a little bit different. I discovered there was a severe lack of structure. There was, uh, no vehicle check procedures, no inspection control plan, no additional duties. It was not in good shape. We weren't a good training plan. So I implemented a number of things and now I have a training plan, the, uh, fatigue process. We fatigue every call if they go on. I have a training officer now that'll, uh, come in randomly, pull calls on the crew, the job crew, and fatigue those calls. As a training aid, a couple of things like that. It went pretty well. The other thing I discovered was that the money coming in, the revenue is, um, was not covered well. The money was very, very tight. They get the revenue from, uh, per capita, and from billing insurance companies. And especially with COVID, the call volume dropped tremendously. People were afraid to go to the hospital. So if you can imagine, you get paid by taking people to the hospital and all those nine-one-one calls, you're getting paid on average about two-thirds. And some people don't have insurance. That's normal doing business. You're not gonna get a hundred percent of your bill. And that is much worse. So call line dropped by about fifty percent. And then all that fifty percent following the state requirement or guidelines. Uh, working with medical direction, you go to a nine-one-one call, call the doc, go, this is what I got. And you're basically trying to talk to people not to go to the hospital. And to go to their own primary care now. So our, our billable revenue dropped to about twenty-five percent of what it had. So looking at this, and, and even pre-COVID, quite honestly, the money was too tight. They didn't have a vehicle replacement plan. They had, didn't have a vehicle, uh, maintenance program. They didn't have funding aside for maintenance. And it was almost like some of the people working here were just waiting for it to fall. And, uh, and, and there's some good people there. Don't get me wrong. It's, it, they, this would not have been, we're getting successful. We made some changes. We're going in a good direction. And it would not have been possible enough for the staff that's working here now, coming together and pulling in the same direction. So one thing that we did is, uh, implemented a, uh, a plan to do non-nine-one-one transfers. Transfers between nursing homes and hospitals, hospitals and nursing homes. That's where money can be made and handled services. The concern obviously is if we're out of a transfer, what happens to the nine-one-one call? Well, if we don't do transfers, we're not gonna be there for any nine-one-one calls in about a year. That, that's a fact. So what I did is I started the, the plan, the transfer program, doing it Monday through Friday during business hours. Because I know Paulney Rescue was on duty at that time and could cover in a, uh, a mutual aid agreement that we're, well, all handling. The other thing that we did is we hired enough staff now that we have, we sell a crew app. So the on-duty crew can get one buck. The message goes out. The message goes out to the entire staff. So a request for a, for a transfer comes in, they hit that buck, go on, and a lot of times they're playing, a day or two out. So I need a crew to come in for uh, transfers. And if there's not time, God knows what happens. We're going out the door for a transfer, I need a crew to come in for station coverage. And so far it's been perfect. At some point, it's probably not. I mean, they're gonna get burned over, or it's going to happen. There's actually no way. I mean, we could be on a 911 call and have another 911 call. It happens. So the plan we, we put in place, plus, plus another change we did, we went to outside billing. Medical billing is its own animal. It's very particular and the change is constant. And there was quite a bit of money being left on the table. Not anybody's fault, just because things changed and they weren't aware. So we went to a professional builder and we've already seen a positive change. So the, the revenue's coming in more from the calls we're billing and we've added the transfers. So those things together have brought us back up to about the same number of calls per month, the 911 calls plus the transfers, but we're about pre-COVID numbers right now. As of June, we were, we did about the same numbers that we did before the COVID happened. But we're billing better. So we're bringing more money in. So I, I'm cautiously optimistic. I think, I think we're on the right track and I think we're gonna be alright. Uh, then appointing me as the, the EMS chief, I don't feel it's appropriate. I'm sitting on the board of directors. Uh, if it was just gonna be for a few weeks, and I abstained on voting on a few things, you know, if it related to me, but they've asked if I would stay on and continue to do this. I don't wanna do forty hours a week, a few weeks out here. I'm supposed to be retired. So uh, I agreed to do it, but we're gonna continue building the structure and my target is to make it so I'm going about twenty hours a week. And I can do that if we bring on white people. I'd like to get like a lieutenant captain position somewhere mid, mid level. Um, I brought on a training officer. Uh, he's the deputy chief and the training officer. He's a ER nurse, so he brings that to the table. I, I have a background in managing emergency services, but not particularly in ambulance. So I'm bringing that, that experience of being a manager, he's bringing the experience of being a paramedic and an ER nurse and that to the table. So both of us together make one good person. So we're, we're doing okay in that area. Uh, other than that, we're just uh, we're gonna keep trying to hire decent people. It's hard. They don't pay enough to, to draw, you make more work in McDonald's. Um, and you're asking a lot of these people to come work there and stay. Uh, we've got a couple other ideas. Uh, one, I wouldn't mind getting, and this is down the road a little bit, I'd like to find a couple college students that are EMTs and maybe provide them housing. Have their towels right there and have them work so many hours a month to pay for the housing, then they also would be available for college. And I pay them when they go to college.
Awesome.
The other thing that we're looking at, you find a doctor assigned on board, is I'd like to start community outreach program. Where the ambulance acts as the mobile bet. So we're already paying them to be on duty. But they could have a list, one, two, three people a day, have contact information. So if they get a 911 call, they go, they can contact them on the way and go, we're gonna have to reschedule. But they would operate under the direction of a doctor and maybe like change bandages or do a post-op exam or whatever the doctor would want them to do, but under the direction of that doctor. That's early stages of, of talking about this, but they, they do it in some other cities, some places do it under a grant. But we can find a way to the billing insurance companies a bit. Now, it doesn't have to be a lot. If we have forty, fifty dollars.
They're, they're doing, um, so there's a transitional care program at the hospital that two nurses were added to over time, over the past two years. They do just that. They only see discharged patients because the quality of care, yes, but it's a financial um, benefit to not have people readmitted again. So they go for a very limited amount of time. That had to be very carefully coordinated with the visiting nurses that we weren't taking away their business. They see people over a long period of time. So I would just, I don't think we can have enough support. I think that's great, but you're gonna all get intermingled. So just talk with the right people.
I, I did talk to a manager of visiting nurses, because I was concerned about the same thing. I don't wanna, I don't wanna take something out their plate either.
Yeah. And then Kathy Boyd is her name at the hospital. She runs a transitional care and the case management program, so.
Um, the, the other thing we discussed doing, uh, some squads bill for refusals and lift assists. We do about three hundred of those a year. And we considered it, but the concern is that you have some older folks that are a limited income. We're worried that they won't call when they should, because they don't wanna get a bill. So we've decided not to bill for, for uh, lift assists and refusals. But we'll reevaluate it down the road. I could see potentially maybe billing for refusals, but not for lift assists. And we can advertise it in a proper manner, but for the time being, we don't wanna have somebody not call that, that needs some assistance. The, the objective is to serve people and to protect them. You know, so we gotta keep our eye on that. Now, yes, we wanna be a solid business, but the main objective is the response. We have to be a solid business to maintain that response. So that's, there's some things that have to happen to meet that objective, but. Um, where somebody calls 911 and you show up and then they don't wanna go to the hospital. It happens all the time.
Happens a lot, yeah.
So we did like six, eight, four calls last month and eighteen of refusals, more lift assists. With the exception of, we are going to bill refusals for car accidents. Because uh, we can bill the automobile insurance company direct. And it's only forty, fifty dollars, but when you do three hundred of them a year, it does add up.
Sounds like you've done a good job turning this around, because it was about half an inch away from.
Well, I appreciate it. It was really, we were close.
Done some positive things though, that should really make a big difference.
Hope so. And like you said though, it has been an absolute team effort. The staff there, I just don't think they had, I'm not God's best management and everything, but they didn't have.
Nobody was pulling it together.
It, it was just, I mean, it was, it was pretty bad. But immediately, it's like overnight, they're, they're checking trucks by our way. They got a vehicle truck receiver now. They got a infectious control officer, a supply officer, a building manager. And there's things that, that building needs a lot of maintenance. And there's just no one. But uh, we're, we're doing okay. We have a couple CDs. We have about, we have about fifty thousand dollars in the bank in CDs. Um, which you really don't wanna touch because you get penalized, but Derek had to. The changing billing and doing the, the transfers is huge. It is, it is making tremendous difference. I'm already seeing that the money, that it was very close to the amount coming in, it's just about what went out first, first month that I was there. And already we're seeing just a slow, slow climb. But we're gonna need a new vehicle at some point. No, those trucks are old. One of those ambulances cost about two hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's a lot of money. Looking at a grant, um, it'll pay sixty five percent. So, you know, we're gonna look at all the different options. I, I don't like them, but I mean, we'll even look at those surrender things if we have to. You know, if nobody likes them, they're only a few months working on them. But if you want that or you want a new pair of sneakers, you really want, you know, we, we gotta do something. Uh, we're gonna sell one of the rigs. We have three ambulances. You don't need three ambulances. Not gonna get much for it. Uh, from what I understand, the resale value is very poor. They're expecting, we're gonna get about sixty five hundred dollars for it. But it costs money to have it. It costs money to, you know, in insurance and people don't think about everything that's in the back of the ambulance. That costs money to maintain and expire, has expiration dates and all kinds of stuff. So it's, it's just not viable to, to keep. We don't need them. I think that, well, I got, I wrote a presentation letter um, for the, for the, uh, my spot on the board of directors. Uh, I, I, I don't mind hanging on until you find somebody to fill the spot. I spoke with a couple people. I, I would, I have a recommendation, I'd like to talk to them.
That would be my question. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, I talked to a individual named Jay Williams. He uh, works for Green Mountain Power. Doesn't have an EMS background. He doesn't really need it.
Yeah.
Uh, he has some common sense.
Know him very well. He's a good guy.
And, and he had, I think he would approach, uh, things, o- objective things. My mind wants my objectives. I, I gotta think that, but I gotta, what, what, what do we have, what do we want to have? And uh, what are the possible ways to get there? And I think he thinks that way as well. So I think he would be somebody that uh, would work well with the existing board and defend myself. And then of course, if we can find somebody who wants my job, that would be really good at it. Have the keys and I'll help them transition and I'll go back to being a doctor.
I, I think that we should talk to Mr. Lynn, but I, I think as we do with every moment of revision, we should prioritize that way.
How much of a time commitment is it to be on the board?
Well, it depends. Um, it, what I was told when I started, it was one meeting a month. Uh, but during the COVID and the problems that were there, it took a little more attention. I can see it getting back to being once a question month. Um, and we met for about an hour, hour and a half. And basically, if you have somebody in my position that has a handle on things and can present to the board, uh, keep them informed, it makes their job secure quicker. So they, they basically, same to the town, they oversee what I do. So I would think hour, hour and a half, once a month is what it will get to again. Right now, we've been meeting, at least talking via email and meeting probably at least once a week in the past couple of months.
Do other board members attend like you would?
Um, yes. Uh, right now, there's been a tremendous change in the board. Um, the uh, woman from Benson, uh, came in, she got to my home, she didn't want to resign. So I'll, I'll sandbar a fellow from Benson. Um, Hampton is out. Uh, Hampton is not going to be dissipated anymore. And that, that had to do with uh, New York licensing. It would cost Pear Haven Rescue a lot of money to maintain the license that New York's has. You need to run an ambulance. And we do like forty calls on average, something like that in Hampton. Honestly, I think it could be worked at home. If they would like to work at home, we could solve the problem by just having a mutual aid agreement. Because you can, you cannot be, if you're on a border, you don't have to maintain the license of the neighborhood state, but you can respond to their mutual aid agreement. So have an automatic mutual aid agreement. I think it gives a donation once a year, equivalent of the per capita. That'd be that. That was it. I learned a couple other things too. I honestly, I probably should share that. When decades ago, the, the ambulance would volunteer. And they still billed insurance companies. So they were putting money in the bank. And from what I understand, about the time they went to pay full-time pay, they had about five hundred thousand dollars of money. Well, the 911 calls don't cover expenses. So that was getting a little way ahead. Instead of coming up with another plan, they just kept away at it. And when I stepped in, we had the two CDs and about enough to cover payroll on the bank. And that was it. With, like I said, no maintenance plan, no vehicle replacement plan and all that. Uh, and also with that, the per capita raise, there's, you folks around, and a lot of other people do, but it's supposed to be, this is the money we have coming in from uh, doing transfers, billing insurance companies, the subscription program, everything that we do that might come in, except the towns. And then this is what it costs to run the ambulance. And of course, it's more than what we have coming in. So the difference is it's divided up amongst the population of the towns we serve, that's the per capita. It was set at about ten dollars for a couple decades and never changed. They just kept taking money out of the. I did lose math. It's very difficult to estimate this because we had COVID this year. We went twenty five percent of the, the revenue for a couple months. Last year, they closed their doors because there was some type of dispute and coup that happened and half the staff left. So they didn't have people to cover the trucks. So there was a couple months that there were no calls. So you can't really use those numbers. I averaged two thousand sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, the uh, revenue that came in and what the estimated costs were. And it came off to about thirty two dollars per capita. Right now, we're, Pear Haven pays twenty dollars per capita. But we have a new billing practice now. So we should be bringing in some more. We're doing transfers now. So we should be bringing in. So I don't know what the per capita ratio is, because I, I have this, you know, long enough without COVID going on. Because even the transfer volume, call volume is down because of COVID. There's less people going to the hospital, less people fighting surgeries. It's just starting to come back. So to give you an accurate amount of, of what it's uh, what the, the difference between what we have coming in, what the costs are, it's, it's very, very difficult. I did, that, that's even affects, the number of calls we're doing affects what it costs for us to operate, because we use things. You know, you use oxygen, you use fuel, you use wear and tear on a vehicle. So if anybody has ideas how I can figure this out, I'll, I'll for Christ's sake.
Who's the ER nurse that you have working there?
Tom Goodman. He's also a paramedic.
Yeah, I know him. I was wondering.
Um, and we, we thought, we're bringing out a couple more paramedics, one from Brooklyn City. Um, so we're getting there. And my thought is, right now, we have one person classified as full-time, uh, because there were four and then everybody else was per diem. One was my physician, and I'm not taking benefits or anything, because I have a retirement, I don't need it. Um, one was a, a young man who wanted to go back to per diem because he wanted to set tone hours. And one was out on workers' comp and, and she is no longer employed with us. So uh, we have one right now who's classified full-time. I've been dragging my feet, I'm failing it. Because benefits got some. So I ended up per diem people recovered. Uh, when we do go higher health positions back, I, I'd like to have a stipulation that they obtain their advanced EMT within a set period of time. Instead of basically, there's different levels and they can do different things. For a couple reasons. One is better care for the community than an advanced EMT can start IV services. And the other thing is we can bill insurance companies a little bit higher. So if we can do that, it'll help. Um, I think that's about it. Does anybody have any questions for me or?
Appreciate it.
No, appreciate the update. It's important to me.
If uh, if, if you don't hear from me in a while, feel free to call me. Go, hey, come down and say what's going on. I'll try to do it on a regular basis, but sometimes I see something changing and I get distracted. But anyways, feel free, it's an open door and if anybody wants to look at whatever, here it is. We laid it on the table. But I think uh, I think it's heading in the right direction. I'm cautiously optimistic. I'm worried about another round of COVID though. But if that happens, it's all going to drop soon. It's, it's gonna hurt. We did uh, I applied for that table protection call. I got that, that helped. I got another small grant, that helped. Um, I, I'm a short list to get money. We ended up having to pay quite a bit in overtime. I had two members deployed with active duty. I had two that were quarantined for a couple weeks. My exposure not from here, but from somewhere else. And I had one that won't work because they have a higher standing number. So that resulted in us having to pay overtime to cover 1047. You maintain twenty-four hour coverage seven days a week with two license providers with a minimum of at least one licensed EMT on the truck since January one. So it's, it's coming. I'd like to make this, we have an ALS provider. That's on the radar, but little steps. And uh, but anyway, the FEMA, I kept track of the overtime and applied for FEMA money. And it looks like they're going to reimburse us the overtime portion of, of the payroll. So that's, that's helpful. We're pointing in the right direction today.
For you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Appreciate working.
Where we talking? What do you else for, we're already up to the five minutes of public comment. We were doing good. We were almost done that. Yeah, well, don't think that. Department head report.
Well, for the.
Department head report.
Well, we've been doing great. We're still on the downhill side of the manholes for sure. Been about around six, we got love. We're definitely on the downhill side of the, still been doing our day-to-day maintenance and phone calls. Kind of serve the, marry the, marry the best we can. No one. No different. No problems. We've been having trees and stuff like that, but. Or is that we've been pulling together and?
When are they coming in for paper?
Oh, Mike has not, I've been talking to him, but he has not given me a set date yet. So I'm not too sure. I can't give you straight up answers on that one. But hopefully in the near future. I'm hoping. But every day that, you know, they delays or speed gives me a day to do other things to the roads or, or answer something else that goes on or, you know, I still have to grade the roads. You know, if water leak comes out, so it gives me that leeway, so it's. Gives me that cushion.
Are we putting shoulders on South Main Street?
Well, that's all state projects. We're all doing that, you know. I got, uh, there's a concern about Lee Avenue that's going to take care of it. I thought Jesse's been here today, so we're gonna look into it and that's gonna be fixed. So while they're now, people have been very happy about the state project. Very, very little complaints and it's just been minor on what I've been hearing so far. So. It's been doing good. Any questions or concerns you guys have?
I still plan on getting down to the, the barn and seeing. I, I've yet to go on tour, but so I'm, I'm long overdue.
Yeah, we're down by the river.
No question.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, our problem.
What you got?
Okay, uh, very quickly.
It wasn't your favorite, you don't have.
Mike, we're gonna talk to Truck.
Oh, you're gonna talk to Truck.
I think we're gonna talk to Truck.
Uh, I, I think it was in your, in the board selection box, Katie Ramey sent, uh, for correspondence. She sent a letter talking about her road Furnace Street. Um, on that, Donnie Howard, I saw him yesterday and I talked to him today. Um, he, he's feeling a little rough, so he didn't come into this meeting, but he, he wanted to say thank you for hearing, uh, the residents' concerns. He's looking forward to hearing what the engineer had to say. Oh, letter went out. We sent the letter out to the folks on Furnace Street. Uh, good feedback on that. People appreciate just being informed and letting us, you know, letting them know what's going on. Uh, Mechanic Street Sidewalk Project, we wrapped that up today. That project came in, it should be about two hundred thousand dollars under budget. Um, we did fix, it, it had, I think it was four change orders, three yard inlets we put in because the water was just pooling. Uh, and then the curbing where the bus drivers keep hitting that corner. Um, there one is, there is one spot on that road, you see it's muddy. Um, towards the south end of Mechanic. Uh, it's the, the property owner drives their car onto the sidewalk and onto the grass. And it's compacted that dirt. So the, the water, even though it's going into the swell like it should, um, it's not going to drain out because it's just, they've just pounded it flat. We, we reached out to the homeowner, but they.
Which one's that, which?
Next to where you used to live.
Yep.
Bushing or.
I don't know. But yeah, it's. We can't convince everybody it was a good project, but most folks are very pleased with it. Um, at the airport, I did take the lock off that gate, but, um, like I had mentioned in the past, I'm getting conflicting. I'm getting complaints both directions. We want it open, we want it closed. Um, the board did ask for it to be open and I did open it back up. Um. Slate sidewalk sale, I did advertise that. Somebody called and left a message, but it was garbled. So if you know anybody that says, well, Joan didn't call me back, uh, it's because I don't know who it was.
How do you advertise things? At position or the site, where are they being advertised?
This was Facebook, Front Porch Forum. I think we put it on the website.
Right. I just never see things. I'm like, what am I missing?
Yeah. We could do direct mailings, but direct mailings are expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Might even try to press release. The Herald probably loads that stuff now.
And, and we put it on the radio too. Yeah.
Really early. You got room for extra paragraph?
I'm sure. About, about a hundred and twenty bucks.
Yep.
Well, for a fresh relief.
Just, just for a little blurb saying this is, because you can't just say I'm selling stuff. You gotta say what it is and what it's about, but yeah.
Try a fresh relief.
Trust me. All right. Oh, we're gonna talk about tax bills later. I did get the information from the listers. Uh, we got a complaint about grass curbs and Joe Festa went up that second when I asked him and he cleaned it up. So he's very responsive to, uh, to complaints. Carol, I haven't forgot about your spreadsheet. I've just got to put the, put the time into it. Um. Town Hall, the, so the big one for Town Hall, uh, we did get a quote back to fix that beam that goes through the, uh, firehouse. Ferguson says it's gonna be about forty, uh, about ten thousand for engineering and thirty for him to do it. Uh, I would expect it to be just a little bit more because we're gonna have to put something back. So probably forty-five to fifty. There is grant funding out there, but it's, you know, everything has a match. So we're gonna have to figure out, at the next meeting, I'll pull some information together and, and give some options. Uh, the architect is working with USDA. That's an extra fifty thousand dollars coming in for the project, so, um, I'm gonna work for that. The business grants, I'm gonna meet with Glenn on Thursday, so the business grants that, uh, the brewery got last year. And we received the year before are back open. Um, I'd like to get, I'm gonna do a direct mailing to all the businesses this year to get them to send in an application if they're interested. It is a one-to-one match. And that's what I got. Yeah, that's all I got.
Um, I'll ask this question here, Nate's still here too. Um, why are we wearing masks at the transit station? Why are we or are not, are not? Um, that building, I, they should be wearing it at least, at least when they're amongst COVID, when they're going. You know, stalling down the cardboard or whatever they're doing or stuff. They should be wearing masks.
I have a, probably a question related to that too, that. What do you do about smoking in there? So if one employee smokes and one, I, I went in the building a while back. It was blue with smoke.
Oh.
Not supposed to be.
Are they supposed to be, or both of them smoke and they agree to it? I just didn't know what the.
There's no, there's no smoking in town buildings or in the equipment.
All right, well, there's no way a person, one person could have come in with a smell like that because it was like, made your eyes water.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll address.
Yeah, like the way things used to be.
But we'll address the situation.
But Diana cancer or disease?
I only, I only had one. When we start paving, are we going to, there must be a plan that says this street and this street and this street. If there was any way we put that plan out so the residents on the street will know there's gonna be a disruption on their street? Or, or, or how they can expect it to, that, that, is that, is there a plan to do that?
Oh, I would have to talk to Mike, but being mindful of that way.
I'm sure they.
Everybody's asking about it.
That, that's the bigger one I hear is, is who, what, what's the sequencing and so they can plan when not to have a lot of companies coming to this. Basically, yeah.
This, this year.
This year.
This summer. Any help with some energy? All right, fuel tank payment for the building?
Yep, so we, uh, I reached out to Mike. The gentleman's doing the project. He's asking for almost seventeen thousand dollars down. And I guess that's where we're at now. He ordered the parts. He'll be, he'll be starting the project soon.
Coming out of that building reserve?
Yes, so I'm, I'm asking, cause so it's a, it's a reimbursement loan. Um, as we spend down, as we spend money, the re, the loan will then reimburse us and we'll put the money back into the, uh, yeah, back into the account.
Want a motion for that?
Sure. I'll make the motion that we pay for the underground fuel tank installation for the municipal building reserve fund. Total payment not to exceed thirty-three thousand eight hundred.
A second.
Is that, is that correct? You just need the seventeen now?
Well, the, the, yeah, the sixteen, the seventeen now is for this payment, but instead of doing two.
Okay.
Two motions, we'll do it all in one go.
Okay.
I'll let you know when the money's coming. Where the bill's coming.
Everybody understands that?
Yeah.
No.
All those are favored?
Hi.
Hi. All those are vote. Okay. Um, dropping down one, unless there's something else to talk about that. DPW capital improvement and truck purchase.
Okay, so th, this is, uh, sticking with our capital improvement budget. Uh, the twenty-seventeen inter, I'm sorry. The two thousand and six, uh, F three fifty is due to be replaced. The first payment should come out of the next budget. So in the twenty, when we budget for twenty-twenty-two, that's when your first payment will come. Uh, Nate did go and get, so. Nate did reach out, get some quotes, which I, were in your packet. Um, it's not cheapest one, but I think the DPW was leaning towards the Chevy.
It isn't the cheapest.
That's the one.
It is.
That's the one that has the plow and everything. You don't have to buy the plow. Is it already installed, the plow?
No, we're gonna install ourselves.
Oh, it doesn't. Doesn't have a body, right?
It'll be a flatbed.
Be a flatbed. But I thought we were done by.
This. There, there's a capital improvement plan that goes to twenty-twenty-nine.
I, I understand that, but I thought we were, so this would be actually, we would budget it. We would budget it for, um, the next budget, so it would be twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, the, the first, the idea would be to make that first now payment now. And then your first payment would come out of the, the budget that we make in October. Does that make sense?
Well, I.
Because we passed July one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I did talk to Jay and he was, he, he was very adamant that he, he didn't like the idea. Um, but this is the last truck, if you look at the, the plan. This is the last truck that's, that's due up until twenty-twenty-four. There are some deposits into the equipment reserve, but for equipment, this is last scheduled.
So we have the money in reserve for that?
Oh, not all of it, no. In the reserve, there is eighty-two thousand dollars. The idea is to make the initial payment and then space payments out for five years.
And add it to the reserve or just put a line item to pay for this?
Yeah, just, yeah, just like all the equipment, it would just go into our payment, payment line.
Because there was a pretty good difference between the three of them, uh, help me understand the logic behind the Chevy versus the, I, I saw the Dodge was like, uh, it was probably forty-one thousand. With it, without the, without the plow, but if you put the plow on it, just add five grand or what would I talk about?
The Dodge, you, but without the plow, it's forty-nine thousand. It was forty-one thousand per capita.
Okay, so it's forty-nine thousand. And five thousand more, so that, that, that would be roughly fifty-three. I'm just trying to see apples without where we are.
So I. They remember if I gave you the Chevy Ford and Dodge. And what the crew has talked about is, it'd be like, we would recommend the Chevy as far as one, because the motors have the same thing. And when they build their trucks, the trucks are a lot lower.
Uh-huh.
And the purpose of the flatbed is to work out of it, and that's what we're trying to do. Because we, like, uh, five fifty, we've been letting Festa use it for a long period, uh, hauling the trailer around. And we've been using the flatbed as a platform. It's way more convenient. Do the manholes and just pretty much any type of project. And it's only at one point, so we, you know, it's not like we're heavy hauling with it. It's just like the, the crew project type, you know what I mean? Easy, uh, access type vehicle, I guess. I didn't throw everybody off on that whole ramble, but.
No.
Right.
I know all about my Dodge Fords and Chevys. And bottom line, it's your personal preference, right? Um, I mean, I get that, well, but. But your father told you to like.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, what's, my personal, uh, personal, I guess, would be, would be the Chevy Duravans going. The, definitely the strong side would be the Dodge Cummins because of the motor, hands down. And for, in my opinion, that switch motors through years, and a lot of different, I mean, I would have to look it up, but since.
Is it, is this big enough? I mean, you said it was a one ton?
Yes, one ton do-ay.
Okay.
That's, we got a one-ton do-ay now, where it's, like, I don't want another F five fifty. I just want the same truck as the one we got, because it's. But newer, because it's just more of the, the flatbed is just definitely way more easier to work out of. Handle stuff, just a lot more easier. All right, we got the, the newer Dodge, the. Well, that's a B T. And we still got two thousand and ten Ford, so we use them for mainly for the plowing. And which we do with the one-ton too. We follow that. We've been, last year, we set that up. Since it has the flatbed, we use it for the wet system that we tried for the first time this year at the pro.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, for trial and error on it, which, you know, a whole different subject, but it did work out good for that.
Jeff?
Um, my question is if you're, uh, real close to bringing on a new department head, um, should we let them have some input?
Yeah, we've, so Nate has, uh, talked with Aaron about it and he's on board. Um, and I, I agree, but, uh, and also, um, we, in my opinion, we can't keep changing the plan every time somebody new comes on board. We get a new board member who's very aggressive about something, it's like, well, a previous board voted on this. Or if we get a new Joe, it's like, well, the board voted on this. It's not, changing things just because one person shows up really throws things into a, a, a mess.
And we had Paul talk about it amongst us as the highway crew, even with Aaron, you know, on the side, you know, me and him, we talk, stuff like that. And he's definitely for it. He understands it, definitely sees the benefits and stuff like that, so it's. So when he comes aboard, he's not, he's not blindsided by this whole, you know, thing.
I guess, uh, yeah, I guess in my head, I was thinking the capital replacement fund is, is pretty well, it's set up to, to, uh, lend to continuity, like you're saying, Joe. But if, if your department head sees that something needs to be swapped around in a particular year, I thought it had some flexibility. So I was just trying to give the department that flexibility. You know, rather than come in and have no budget and no capital funds left.
Yeah.
For the next two or three years.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's fair. That's a hundred percent fair, Joe.
Just trying to give him, whoever, you know, just to give him a little bit of a, a, a start.
Yep.
My, what did you say?
There's a bunch of jumbo mumble.
He just said, he hoped that there was a little bit of flex, flexibility to move things around for new department heads.
Oh, man.
Well, this, this will effectively uh, spend the whole capital budget, right? Here's, good, good question. Good question, Jeff, because when I looked at that, I said, well, we have, we have a lot of things we need to buy, not only this truck, but uh. If you're talking roadside mowing and, and putting in next year's budget or something, uh, something. That, that could cost anywhere between fourteen, eighteen thousand for a one of the garden roadside mowers. Uh.
The meeting there has been coming up a different, since I'm the whole tractor.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm, I'm a. I'm behind you on the truck, if that's what the department really wants. That's, but I, it pretty well uh, shuts you down on buying stuff for the year.
Yeah, and that, to that point, that's the, I mean, that's, that's perfect, because that's, that's all that's in the budget. For, for the roadside mower, honestly, it's budgeted for, for twenty-twenty-six. We're just gonna have to make do unless that thing completely rolls off the edge of the earth. We. It, we set a plan, we really need to stick to it as best we can, and, and bouncing around, moving ten thousand here, five thousand there. Unless it's a real emergency, it's, it, you may as well not have a plan, you may as well just shoot from the hip.
Can anybody report that?
I agree with you, Joe. I just.
Well, my thoughts, I've been in the road.
Why would they do it?
Was getting, obviously, the brush hog, four and stuff like that, but I have seen uh, a couple towns now, the town of Way Hall. And the town of Holden, town of Holden, Bob, the playhouse in the rest of it. And what I seen on York Street, I don't know if you guys know that, it's uh, but it actually looks nice. So I mean, I, that, I haven't priced it out or anything remotely like that.
Is that the, what they did on the, on the road, New York Street extension towards Prairie, the Prairie Road or?
Yeah, so on like, heading, you're around Prairie Road, you're heading into towards the village, I guess.
Uh-huh.
That's what, that's what actually did it with the rest of the, the playhouse.
That thing needs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It turns out, to me, it does a great job.
Well, there's nothing left, that's for sure.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the purpose of, you know, we've been cutting trees, we bought that shipper. A year, three, two, a year and a half ago, and we've been hammering on the trees, not so much now because of the paving. And obviously, the weather and stuff like that, so. But the idea is like, keep trees, get the bigger trees out, and keep everything, you know, down.
Yep.
Supposed to be, you know, look better for the town, so I have to rush it to Gary's after grabbing it down.
That'd be nice.
You know, that's, you know, the goal of the, you know, the purpose of, one of the purposes of the town.
Well, let's get back to.
Let's get a, let's get a motion for.
Yep.
I'll. What I hear, I'm gonna make a motion that we purchase the Chevy. For sixty-three thousand five twenty-five with plow and box.
I'll second it.
Question on that, on that, uh, that you're putting the, the body and the plow, you're setting that up?
Uh, file, or excuse me, the body, they're both.
Okay.
The plow, we're doing to save money. And it's easy to do in the shop, you know, I talked to, well, the guy that works down there, uh, really good and stuff like that, he's more comfortable doing what it would be in.
Where do you buy it from?
What's that?
Who, who are you working with?
These buggies.
For the, for the plow and the, but uh.
Yeah, the truck, where's that coming from? Okay.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep. Are your, are your uh, when are these bids good for? Will they hold a couple weeks or no?
Yeah, they should, Joe.
Purpose me? Yep.
What?
What's the?
What's the thought?
Yeah.
In my head, I still like, I still like having. Uh, the new guy on board before we make huge decisions to change, even if they were kind of slated. If there's, if it's only like a week away. It, it seems like it, it could wait a week or two. Unless we're gonna miss a deadline or something like that.
Well, like I said, I mean, I know, like, me and Aaron's conversation was not amongst the board at all, but we had talked and. I mean.
Yep.
He, he is on board, and that's my word on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Aaron is supportive, that's, we've. Um, myself as well, I, I've talked to him too, just, yeah, during the transition.
Yeah, I know, I've not heard you, I thought I had been talking to him, to, just then for him, really.
Well, that doesn't hurt.
No, it's just.
No, it's good, it's good. It's great that you guys are communicating, I think that's good.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Can I get another motion? Um, I didn't realize we were gonna do this today. Um, can I get a, a motion for a twelve thousand dollar um, down payment for, to come out of the public works vehicle equipment fund?
In order to accomplish that?
Oh, yes, in order to make that first payment. And we'll finance everything else at two and a half percent.
Sure, okay, I'll make a motion. That we take twelve thousand five hundred out of our. Department Public Works Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll second that, not my job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Uh, aye.
Okay. I bought a truck, I just bought a truck.
What color is it? Are they all red?
Yes.
Yes.
Cool.
That's the color, yes. Alright, that's good.
And you're gonna, you're gonna letter it up the same as the other one, right?
Yes, it's gonna be lettered up same as the Dodge, you have. And the green truck is actually gonna be lettered same as well.
Nice.
So everything will be, the only thing that won't be matching is the, well, the color will be, but the two thousand and ten Ford doesn't have the same lettering, it's still a circle. Part of it, so. Other than that, we agree.
And uh, are you planning to sell the old truck, or are you gonna run the, run with this as an extra?
Well, we plan on selling the other truck.
A little upset, a little.
No.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, transfer? Don't worry.
Yes. Ooh, Mike, Mike Morgan uh, submitted an application for, uh, Craig, he owns a couple of buildings down, uh, down street. And he would like, uh, like to just be billed for using the transfer station once a month. He supplies references and all the correct paperwork. Yeah, he, he just goes down and pays like every week with a check, and it's driving him nuts, so.
What's, what's your recommendation, Joe?
Good question.
Uh, he's, I mean, he's trustworthy, man, I mean, he's been in town for a while, I wouldn't recommend it.
And what's our normal process when you get these requests?
Just like this, we bring the application and ask it.
Okay.
You do for other people?
Yeah.
That was what I was looking for.
The one that has.
Okay.
There are multiple businesses that have accounts.
Right.
Okay.
That's good.
The only reason I, I asked Joe for his recommend is he's seen the references and, and everything.
Yeah, and I've worked with him, just.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
So you're looking.
I, I'd make a motion to extend credit.
Second.
Man, second it.
Well, this man seconded.
Oh, I didn't.
Oh, I'll second it.
You guys luck on that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yeah.
So that's where I buried up the transportation, I have one thing. Because um, I would. With the punch chair, there's only like two ways I could see, because we're losing dollars, and that actually down there. I would wanna see which one solution is, I, I don't like it, but it is, maybe raised up to two hundred bucks a ton. Which I think is a steep, I think the better solution would be making the punch chairs a dollar a ton. That way you don't lose, because sometimes they roll down sale at seven bucks. So you see what I mean?
Oh, yeah, you can't on the even, on the even dollar amount, you're losing money.
Dollars per punch.
Yeah.
So that's just ninety-seven bucks.
That's, that's easy enough to do.
That's a good idea, I was wondering about that.
We can do that the next time you work ours, just do, just do a dollar.
Yeah, we just have that do it.
Yeah. That's easy, you can redesign it, do it so there's more places to punch on one card.
Yeah, bigger cards.
Yeah.
Bingo cards.
Just.
That size.
Yeah. Dollars.
Yeah.
Now that I love the dumps on much.
Uh. Not quite willing to do that. Not gonna. Good. Yeah, wouldn't do that.
So, just like you said, my opinion on that.
Yeah.
That's a good, a good point.
That's a real good idea. Tax rate?
Yes. The state, the state got back with me today with the interim rate, as well as the non-residential tax rate. Uh, on the sheet that was uh, in front of you, you'll see three uh, highlighted yellow boxes. Uh, the first one is your grand list. Uh, the second one is the homestead tax rate, that's gonna be the rate that's our interim rate right now. Last year it was a dollar thirty-four per hundred, their interim rate is ninety-two cents per hundred. I can see that number being closer to a, a dollar forty. I, I don't see it being that low.
Yeah, that's really optimistic.
Yeah, so, um, but right now, the uh, highlighted and then the circled numbers. The dollar ninety-eight there, and then the two dollars and fifty-six cents, those are the um, tax rates, those are the numbers we'd send out this week to the residents.
So we will end up sending a supplemental?
We will.
That could be quite a large amount of money, the supplemental could be, right?
It, yes.
I just wonder how much people are gonna understand of that, because I don't get it.
We're gonna, we're gonna need to send a letter explaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we drafted a letter already, and, and it's just explaining what happened and why it happened, and then explaining the, when things are due.
Highlight certain things, because they're gonna see their bill and say, yippee, right?
Yeah.
And then they're gonna get caught.
Right.
Day, which is the week.
Week.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to take credit for.
Decreasing by fifteen or ten.
Yeah. I don't think we can.
Might as well try, Bob. Good platform to run on.
Yeah, there you go.
So from the board, I would just, if the, if the board accepts uh, this, then I would need a, a motion that says something along the lines of uh, homestead. Uh, I'm sorry, interim homestead tax rate would be set at a dollar ninety-eight forty-eight. And then the same for the non-residential, uh, at two dollars fifty, fifty-six cents thirty-one.
Do you need two different motions, or can one motion include both of them?
Could be both.
Same, both.
Okay, so uh, I'll make a motion that the interim homestead tax rate be a dollar ninety-eight forty-eight. And the non-residential tax rate be two dollars fifty-six thirty-one.
Second it.
Everybody understanding what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Email us, copy that letter.
Yes. I'll email it to, I'll, I'll email it tomorrow, and then you can let me know what you think before I send it out.
And I can air? Aye.
Great. Gonna be trouble. Yeah, well, we've done that before, it's happened before. This is, but. Um. Anything in the, in the parking lot, or spend a lot of time on it?
Just from the cheat sheet that came out, uh, would you like to, to uh, try to finish up the personnel policy at our next meet, on our agenda, next meeting? Before we get, I don't want, before we start getting into taxes, I'd rather get it. Few pages, I think, left to review.
Yes.
Alright, you want me to drop that out in the next agenda?
Let's try, see what happens. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be too awful busy here.
It's boring work, though.
Good. When is it, when is our next meeting?
The twenty eighth.
That may not be here. I have them, uh, oh, we're going. Visiting children, I enjoy.
So while, while I have the board here, I could use a little bit of uh, guidance on the park. Um, we do have a tree that was cut down, I think, two years ago, and there's just a stump. Uh, we wanna grind the stump, but what typically do we do when it's time to replace a tree? Do we just plant a sap, or do we put a, a tree in?
I'll buy one.
Claire usually does it, yeah.
I'll donate a tree to replace the stump. The last two times I walked through the parking.
Well, we have.
Couple hundred dollars, I can buy a tree to replace that stump.
We have a tree farm, that's what I was saying, do, do we wanna get a big tree, or just put a, put a small tree in?
We wanna get, don't we want, what do you usually put in, something?
I don't know, I sat in Rotten at the kind of lake place, I saw a place made of tree. It was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, a few, a couple hundred dollars, I can get a, a bigger one. If you have a tree fund, buy whatever you want.
So, we get a made island.
Send Claire shopping.
Send, send, yeah.
Have them deliver it.
Send some out for it, but we have a fund that can.
You guys all respect it.
I, I'm.
In your spare time.
I, I'm not being the wise guy, but I, it seems like there's a lot of trees in the park. It's very dark in there.
I counted them one time, there were fifty-two.
I just wonder if there's, is there a time where they should be? Not thinned out, we wouldn't do that, but if there's one down and ground, should we just?
Well, there's a couple that have been, that have been uh, that just died. One was hit by lightning.
It just seems really dark in there to me, but maybe that's how it should be, I don't, that's my preference, I guess.
Yeah, but I worry when I think about DPW's work schedule, I, I, I add cutting some more trees down, or do we bring someone in?
No, I'm not saying cut them down, not that, I'm saying if something happens, we always have to replace it, or should we just let a little light in?
Not get a tree ward.
There's a tree.
We got a tree ward. Yeah, we do. You do have a tree.
She would have suggested.
Is plant hours or tree?
Bill standards, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Dick though, or?
Both of them.
Yeah. I'll ask him. Got it.
Jeff, you don't wanna jump in on this conversation?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm trying to learn from the meaning, I just.
Well, why?
I actually really do have a question, could it be, what we want to ask?
Yeah.
I like.
Go ahead.
I like replacing trees just because they take so long to grow, to catch up.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
But it's not, it's not a deal breaker to me either way, so.
Let's see what, let's just see what Phil has to say about it. We did, he would have, you'd have.
He'll know.
Challenge of that.
Speaking of trees and Bill Standard Tree Warden. On the corner of Adams, that goes by the inn, and the first office street.
Marvel.
There's a dead maple tree, it's big.
Dead maple tree.
On the corner of Adams and Marvel?
Right across the street from the Fair Even Inn.
In the parking lot, or?
No.
I know where you mean, it is a big one, yeah.
And I was looking at that the other day, and I'm thinking, we should take that down while you can, the wood is still good enough to sell.
Yeah, it'd be good wood.
I mean, there, there's. Two winters worth of heat for, for the house.
How do you move that, if you look at that from a lot?
Well, I'm not the tree warden, I'm the pet steward.
Yeah, let's not get confused.
Don't we gotta go out and trim stuff anyways? We get ready for paving, there's a lot of.
Well, this is not a trim, I mean, this.
Oh, no, I understand. Probably, it's come down. There's a few of them there, kidding, that way, but. Not a huge guy, so.
Bye.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I said to you earlier the question about. What, what's, what's the reason? It's always been a tree warden, but, but what are the?
I agree with you.
More and more.
It's pretty dark.
Alright.
I, I like the shade, but it's pretty dark.
Yeah.
Well, the, the northeast corner of the park is not there. There's some trees missing in there.
As we're kind of talking about the park, not prolonged beginning, but.
Too late.
Yeah, pretty much, right? So, the town by is picking tables every year. So do that, and I was wondering, I wanted to know about you guys, if I had permanent ones. Maybe like one, two a year. Like one, one section and you gotta learn another section, just try it out, like concrete go pad. Permanent. You don't have to pick a table. It's there. You just have to go away, like, hey, I want some here, every other year. So I mean, that's.
Get prices.
To my two sides.
Get prices, get prices with checkerboard and.
So. Better.
Oh, what a good idea.
Excellent.
And privilege, that one.
Oh, man, come on, there we go.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Take that, Joe.
Yeah, that would definitely bring more people to the park and hang out.
No, you could leave, you could leave chess, just checkerboard just, you know, at the library or here.
Yeah.
Bring your own.
Bring your own.
Yeah.
It'd be nice. My wife's always wanted to do that, so.
There we go.
Yeah. I gotta give credit where credit's due.
I love.
I would have thought about that.
Alright. Moving right along. Round table?
Jeff, just one question with the, with the streets that we're gonna be paving and everything. I was up at the airport. Pile of milling just sitting there that uh. It is getting, it's harder and harder that I, it looks like uh. If we get. Is there something stopping us from taking and just kinda leveling some of that out and everything? Because even if someone wanted to use the pavilion. And pull it back, it's getting tougher and tougher just, if you wanna do. I mean, you can go on the grass. There's quite a lot of milling.
And before we take, well, I took over. There, what I heard was it was brought up there for a base.
Yeah.
For either just, I'm guessing the salt shot, yeah. So that's the running reason. That I.
That'll break up and free.
That freed up. Yeah, it should be fine for like. You know, probably a couple years. Might have gone off longer than that, or we would have, have to bring a new machine.
I, I guess what I'm saying, I, when I go up there, that's, that's one of our designated recreation spots. Watch my cat, that big mound. I'm just not sitting right next to where the picnic table, I, I wouldn't wanna use the picnic table. But it's sitting there. Uh, if, if, you know, whole idea was bring it there and use it as a base, why? Can't, can't we, are we waiting for some special time that we need some permit or something?
That's, that's exactly it, Glenn. We're, we can't just start. We can't dig a hole and just spread it. We need permits, we need to, to design, we need to, we need to start construction. That, that pile will probably be there until construction begins. Which could be later this year or early spring, depending on how fast we can get these guys moving.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah. Sorry, it does look like heck.
It, it just uh, not a very inviting place to dump. Right, yeah.
Yeah?
Uh, I've got nothing.
Um. I got one thing. Uh, the uh, Kendles got ahold of us this weekend. There was people shooting up. Up there Sunday afternoon. They were very polite, very, very responsible, young. Young adults, there's two or three couples. They were shooting. They were shooting towards. The bridge, they, they were. Set up so they could. See. They were doing everything they should have been doing. The question I have is. Can they do that? Um, you know, it, it's like. The Kendles are of the opinion that can't shoot within town limits. I don't know if that is, constitutes town limits or if we're talking Philly's limits. Uh, so we need to find that out. We need to. We need to. If it was me, I mean, I used to go up there, I still do it sometimes, go up there and sight my breakfast. Before deer season, so I don't wanna ban people from shooting up there. Um. Talked about, just talking back and forth with actually gay and. You know, could we put a pile of material across there so they'd be shooting in the material anyways? Thirdly, do we limit it to town residents only? Um, these guys. Like I said, they were perfect gentlemen. And, and ladies, they, they were, they were. They were up there shooting and, and they were, I guess they've been shooting all afternoon and uh. When I asked them, because I didn't know what the deal was, I, I explained to them that we gotta figure this out. I asked them not to shoot anymore because of, they're bothering one of the, one of the neighbors. And they absolutely picked up, they were out of there before I was finished talking to the Kendles, they were all out the door. Um, so. I'd like to know what the deal is. My, my inclination would be to limit it to town residents.
Do you have a noise, a noise ordinance or something? That, just trying to think if I was. Not just the Kendles, if I was living in the, in the telephone park, but. Don't wanna hear this bang, 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 bang.
I mean, I, I think what we should do is set up, make a range up here. You know, make it. So we can do that, but you gotta do an insurance, a whole big insurance thing. And uh.
Check for something?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I think, I think at one point, we had this, this discussion. And we fell short of banning it or condoning it, you know, either way, we, we. Came down right in the middle, just like you're kinda saying. And uh, we put up safety zone signs on the south end.
Yeah, I, I think. I think we gotta.
So that, that's an o- automatic, what, like two hundred foot buffer?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're right. I'm not exactly sure of it. Um.
And it pushed, it pushed everything north. And the only concern I have with people shooting up there is that sometimes they shoot the length of the runway. North.
Yeah.
Not, not knowing that there's a, a road up there that comes around, that people are walking and driving on.
Well, I, I think if we set up. If we did, if we decided to do anything, if we set up with. Just old junk material, you guys don't have any other place to dump. On the other side of, on the west side of the. On the west side of the, the um, runway. It'll be up against that ridge anyways, but if we put a pile. About the size of the one you got there now, but that way.
I, I even control it well.
That's, that's the thing. That's, that's.
And the other thing like I know. I mean, side about it is. Am I gonna get phone calls because I gotta go up here and pick up?
Trash.
Trash.
Yeah.
Garbage, and then there's trash and people. You know what I mean? Like, I don't.
It's been done there for a hundred years. And so I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
No, I agree with you.
I know, but I just, but I don't know that we need to be. My concern, well, these guys were from North Flair.
I, I, well, I even go step further than you, I'm, I'm on the other side of the corner. I'm looking for people to do biking, walking paths, possible dog park. If you're gonna do that kinda, and we don't have that much space for, for those. And if we're going to have people shooting up there. Uh, uh. I wouldn't work as a dog park. I wouldn't encourage.
Why not?
I, I, no way would I be going, I'm, I'm there for the decent place, go for a walk.
If I was gonna do a dog park, I'd actually find money, invest in doing the tennis roll around, please.
Oh. I'm, I'm with you to have a.
That's what I would do. I'd have.
Well, but let's put it on the, let's put it on the agenda for. Different, so we don't waste time, but. Just think about what you're thinking. I, I get where you're coming from.
I, I.
I think they could call it this, that's it. But, let's, let's move on.
You want, so we, I could do that, do you want me to? I kinda post it as a public hearing, so if people feel they can come and give input about shooting at the airport, or you just wanna do regular.
Yeah. But should be on the agenda.
Wouldn't we wanna find out first, just. What is the ordinance that we have?